Snow and you're ready, Chris.
I'm ready.
Yeah, we're ready when you are, Chris. Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Harvey, it's all you.
Okay, this meeting is called order at seven o'clock. Uh, uh.
We're gonna join you in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, okay. Uh, would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
We will.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the United States of America.
To America.
States.
To the Republic.
Public, for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty. Justice. Justice.
Very nice.
Okay.
All right, notice of this meeting was mailed, was emailed to the Herald News, the Record Office of the County Clerk, the college community, and posted on the PCCP website on April sixth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Alumni Rec. Rec. Go.
Here.
Trustee Duham.
Here.
Trustee Esquiche.
Here.
Trustee Marco.
Here.
Trustee Moody.
Present.
Trustee Poe.
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Here.
Trustee Smith. Trustee Treddy. Trustee Tanis.
Here.
Chairman Nutter.
Yeah. Okay, are there any corrections to the minute? Last meeting? Okay.
I have a question.
Corrections. May I have a motion for resum?
Hold on, Harvey, hold on. Al, go ahead.
Uh, my question is, uh, under executive, uh, session. It said that, um, the, the, uh, it was determined that the executive session was not needed since the matters were mainly personnel and, uh, well represented. But i- isn't, that's what the executive committee is for, personnel? One of them. Kind of confusing to me.
Mike, do you want to take that one?
Sure. So, last month, when we got to the point in the agenda where there was uh, executive session, I asked if there was any need for it. Since it was determined that an executive session was not needed, um, yeah, you're right. This should be better worded. Um, it says here, executive session was not needed. Should say, since there were no matters, um, involving personnel.
That's which needed, which said which needed to be discussed. I mean, there were personnel matters, but none needed.
There were no personnel matters that needed to be discussed, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, so it probably should read Evelyn was not needed, uh, since there was no discussion required on personnel matters.
Got it.
Okay, that's.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, if there's no objection to the correction, uh, I would like to ha- uh, I would like to have a motion, a resolution number one approval of. Hello? March.
So moved.
Who moved? I need a name.
Uh, Al Moody.
Okay, move by Moody.
Second.
Poe?
Anne.
Yes, I second.
Okay. Trustee Duham.
Uh, Epstein.
Epstein. Trustee Esquiche. Yes. Trustee Marco.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Tanis.
Yes.
Chairman Nutter.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we move to the reports.
Okay, let me, uh, so, so let me fill you in on, on where we are officially now and in terms of giving. So, so we have about a thousand different sections of courses that, that we offer each semester. Uh, about ten percent of them are online always where, and about ninety percent of them are done in the classroom. So, in a, in a period of about two weeks, we had to convert all of the sections, about nine hundred different sections, which were taught in classrooms to get them converted to an online format where students could take them remotely. And I, I, I just have to tell you, you know, that's, that's a gargantuan task. Um, and everyone came together and, um, you know, Jackie's on, Jackie's online here and, you know, the faculty just stepped up, did whatever they had to do to get it done. The administration, you know, worked with, uh, people to support them and wi- within two weeks, we were fully functional online. The great news is, we've heard from, you know, kind of like this board meeting, um, the attendance has been really strong. Um, you know, students have been showing up online, you know, from, from day one, they, they got involved. You know, some of our classes are meeting like this, u- using this format to meet. Others are doing assignments online. Ev- everybody's kind of doing it a little differently. But we're getting our students through and, you know, that's, that, that was our goal, you know, it, it, it's a bad enough situation, but if our students were to lose this semester totally, you know, some of them are planning on graduating in May, you know, to lose this semester would have, would have been, been a terrible thing. So, right, you know, w- we, like many colleges in the country, we converted to a pass fail system where the default, if a student wants to get a grade, they can request to get a regular grade. But the default is, we're just giving pass or, or no credit for the course. That's really taken a lot of pressure off of the students, you know, many of them were not used to meeting like this or doing this type of, of, you know, classes or using the technology. And, you know, so of course, we're, you know, we, we've been able to adjust, um, but the, the response we're getting from students is great now, you know. As, as Carlos was saying before, our stu- mo- many of our students are from Patterson and Passaic, and it, it's very similar situation to what you'll have in, in the high schools where some of our students do not have high-speed internet access. Some of our students don't not have technology, the proper technology in, in order to do this. So, um, you know, we know a lot of students were trying to use their cell phones to, you know, to do their classes. Um, you know, to read and to, to do these types of meetings on a cellphone and, you know, that's tough. So, um, Brad and his staff, um, scoured the college to look at all, for all of the laptops that we could find. Um, and probably now Brad, about a hundred seventy-five.
That's right, Dr. Rose.
So, we, we are, by, by tomorrow, we, we, we should have lent out a hundred seventy-five laptops to students who, you know, just did not have the right technology to do it, you know, we probably need some more, but we're, um, you'll see in today's packet, we have a, a purchase, uh, going to you tonight to buy more laptops that we're going to be able to, to hand out to students. You'll probably see another purchase next month, uh, in, in terms of being able to do that. So, you know, one way or another, and our, our faculty are working with the students, our, our counselors, our tutors, all the people who support the students are working with them to do everything we can to, to try and get them through. The four-year colleges in the state, um, for almost all of them now have said that they are more than willing to accept these pass fail grades. Normally, a pass fail wouldn't transfer. Um, usually you have to have a letter grade in order to transfer, but they have agreed that, um, for this semester, they, they will take those courses as transfer. So that takes a lot of pressure off of the students. We extended the semester by two weeks at the end, uh, in, in May, in order to give them more time to, to get everything done. If students still have a hard time completing some of the things, we'll be doing more incompletes than we normally do, where a student will have extra time in order to finish the course, you know, so our, our, e- everything we're doing, the goal is to try and get these students through. One way or another. Um, and at, at least at this point, it appears to be working, you know, fairly well. A- as I said before the meeting started, you know, um, i- i- it's hard to get an exact number, but, you know, probably at least half of our students who were employed uh, a few weeks ago are no longer employed. You know, we know where our students worked, the type of places that they worked and, uh, most of the, you know, if, if they worked in restaurants, if they worked here, if they worked there, those places aren't open anymore. And, you know, so we know a lot of our students are, are unemployed. One of the big questions is, is, you know, and none of us can answer this at this point, how long is this going to go on? So obviously, we've made plans for our summer school, which starts in, you know, the first week of June, we actually moved it back a week to start it in June. Um, we're, we're, we're doing that in this same format, both remotely and online. Uh, our, our summer session, which starts in July, we haven't made a formal decision yet as to whether that's going to be online, but chances are it will be. And we're, you know, we're, we're preparing both ways for the fall semester to, and we'll, we'll see what happens then. Obviously, everybody wants to, you know, be back in the classroom by the fall, but, um, w- we, we don't know. Um, and obviously, you know, in, in, in the, in the meetings I've been having with the state officials, you know, what we hear from, you know, the, from the Commissioner of Health and what we hear from others, you know, chances are at some point in the next month or two, hopefully, we can transition back to campus, that workers can come on campus and we can start doing more things on campus. But whether we're going to be able to hold, you know, put thirty people in a room for a class by September, we don't know at this point. So we're, we're going to plan for, you know, any contingency that's out there and we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens. So obviously, the next, you know, the, a concern in all of this are, just like for every business that's out there, in some ways, the college is a business. And, you know, financial implications of all this are, 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 are pretty severe. And, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out exactly what they are at this point. So, the state of New Jersey, um, e- every state, but not just, but obviously, we're concerned about the state of New Jersey. The state of New Jersey was not prepared for this. Um, you know, no state had enough in its rainy day fund to cover this type of eventuality in New Jersey a little less than others because of the pension issues that, that we've had. So, already, the state has cut our allocation for April, May, and June in half. Um, that comes to about six hundred thousand dollar cut for the college of what we were anticipating getting from the state this year, um, which we're no longer getting. Um, what's going to happen in July, August, and September, I think all of you had heard that the state is extending its fiscal year, which typically ends June thirtieth. They're extending the fiscal year till September thirtieth instead. What that means for us for the first couple of months of the new, of what would have been the new fiscal year, we don't know. Um, I, I would highly doubt if we're going to get fully funded during that period of time. I, I, I dare say not, we're not. Um, whether it's a, continues at a fifty percent reduction or not, uh, w- we, we don't know at this point. Obviously, we've had some extra costs because of this, um, you know, converting to online, there's some technology costs and everything, not too t- terrible. But, you know, obviously, we're buying more computers, we're, we're, we're doing things that we need to do, we're going to do, we have to work on developing faculty to make sure that they do this well and, you know, again, we've been doing, I, I think everybody has stepped up and is doing a great job, but our online tutoring is, is obviously ca- going to cost more and a lot of things, so we've got some extra expenses. We also have some savings. You know, uh, we didn't feed you dinner tonight, so, uh, that's, you know, I mean, it's, it's things like that. Obviously, we're not going to be able to, you know, hold commencement in May, and we're not going to be able to do a lot of the ceremonies, so we'll save on chicken wings as well. Um, you know, those kind of things, but, you know, w- we're, we're trying to figure this out now exactly what the implications are. So, y- you've all heard about the CARES Act that was passed by Congress, you know, a few weeks ago. So we were no- we got notice last week that the, w- our total share of the CARES Act is five point four million dollars. Um, that's, that's coming to Passaic County Community College. The first two point seven million is emergency aid to students. It's, it's, it's got one purpose, no other purpose than that. Uh, more or less, we're getting two point seven million dollars that we're, we're trying, we're coming up with a process and, and the goal is to get that out to the students who need it. So we've set up a, uh, a lot of people have been working hard on setting up, uh, a plan to how we were going to do this. We set, we, we created an online forum for students. We notified them, um, basically yesterday at about this time, we sent out a, a, a letter to the students via email. And within the first, um, eighteen hours or so, we had five hundred students write back to us. And, you know, from what, I haven't seen them yet, but from what I have heard, you know, the students are basically, you know, they have to give us, you know, some description of what happened to them. The, you know, the requirement is, is that the money goes to students who are impacted by the, by the current crisis. So, it's to help students, you know, pay their bills, you know, put food on the table. Um, you know, do what they need to do in order to get by, so they hopefully will be able, this is not going to totally derail their college careers and they're going to be able to get back on track. So right now, we're, we're, we're in the process of figuring out how to, how to administer these two, this two point seven million dollars and get it out to students. It does not all have to go out at once. Right now, we can, we can distribute it over the next couple of months. You know, but a- our, our goal, of course, is trying to get it into the hands of the students who need it most. Uh, I see Todd's on the call, you know, w- we, we also have repurposed some of our foundation funds to try and add to that two point seven million to get it out to, to students who need it, you know, we, right now, it's mostly anecdotal stories, you know, that we're hearing, but, you know, you've got, y- you've got, y- you all, you all have heard how many single parents we have at the college, but, you know, we find out the living situations of a lot of our students in this kind of time. You know, the student who was living with their parents, who now their parents are both unemployed. And, you know, there's nobody to put food on the table and nobody to pay the rent and, and those kind of things, so we're, you know, i- it's two point seven million may sound like a lot of money, it's not. When you start, you know, it's, it's an average of probably six, seven hundred dollars per student that we have, but if we can help a few students, um, get through this, that's the goal, that's what Congress passed and, and that's what the legislation was, so we're, we're going to do our best there. There's another two point seven billion dollars, which is coming to the college to, uh, a- allow us to recover some of the extra expenses directly related to this situation. Um, the rules on that money kind of were just put out this afternoon. Um, the money has become available this afternoon. Um, w- while there was legislation and we thought we understood the rules from the legislation. Now, when we're getting the Department of Education's interpretation of the rules, they're somewhat different than what we thought they were going to be. Um, so we're, we're trying to figure that out now, and that, that just happened a couple of hours ago, where we got this. Obviously, it's going to be a help to us. Uh, and, um, but there's a, there seem to be a lot of restrictions on how that money is going to be used, so we're trying to figure out, you know, exactly how much it's, it's going to be able to help us. But we will be able to do things like get more laptops available for students to use. Um, it, it may help us cover the, uh, reduction in state aid that we got, although that's not totally sure yet. Um, it, it may help us clear some of the students' accounts, because, you know, many of our students were naturally on payment plans where they, you know, paid in, in installments their tuition for the semester, and while they were employed, they made the payments to us, and now that they're unemployed, they're not going to make the payments to us. So, you know, Stephen's job is trying to figure out, uh, who's paying what and, uh, and, you know, the, the good news is our, our cash flow is good. Um, we, we've got, you know, a, a good amount of money. We're, we're liquid right now, and we will be for quite a while. So that's good, you know, they've been done, you know, Stephen and Sandy Levitt have done a great job of, you know, making sure that, you know, we, we, we plan and spend our money well, but it, it, it's, that won't go on forever, and it's, um, you know, the county has already reached out to us and, you know, they are, they are to help us if we need help, and they, they've made that very clear. You know, we also were able to help them, uh, as, as you know, our nursing program, our EMT program, our fire training program all had, we had a lot of, we had masks, we had gowns, we had gloves, you know, we had the kind of things that they need and, you know, when, when the county was setting up its testing area up at William Patterson, um, one of the things that was standing in the way of them doing it was that they didn't have masks, that they didn't have gloves, and they, they certainly were low on all of those things, and we were able to donate a, a fairly good sum of those things to the county so that they were able to get going quickly to, to get those, get the testing started. So, um, you know, what usually happens in this kind of situation, when the economy goes bad, usually our enrollments skyrocket. That's what's happened before, you know, in, after two thousand and eight, when the, when we, we had the crash, you know, our enrollments were going up ten percent a year. Um, this is not that type of crash. Um, y- you know, it's, by all, by all technical definitions, this is a recession. But, um, it's, it's obviously a different type of recession than anyone we've ever had before. Um, you know, our, is our enrollment going to be up twenty-five percent in September, or is it going to be down twenty-five percent? Um, I, I can make a good argument that either of them are going to happen right now, and it, it's just too early. I think in the long run, a- our enrollments will go up unfortunately bec- because, you know, it's going to take a while to recover from this and, you know, I think, you know, especially a college like us that does a lot of healthcare training. Um, I, I think everybody's realizing right now that we don't have enough trained healthcare workers out there, and I think, um, they're going to be in demand. I, I cannot tell you how many calls, you know, I have gotten from hospitals, from other places, that, you know, can we graduate our nurses early? You know, can we, can we get them out into, you know, the field quicker? Are any of our staff, you know, do we have a, do we have a health center on the campus? You know, we don't. But some colleges have a health center where they have nurses who are employed. Can we transfer them, you know, to, to do some other type of work? Those are the kind of calls we, we've been getting to try and help, um. You know, we, we, we do what we can. St. Mary's Hospital called and asked if they could use our nursing lab in Passaic because they were retraining some of their operating room nur- recovery room nurses into critical care nurses. Because they knew the surge was coming and, um, they were hit very hard at St. Mary's, so, you know, those are the kind of things we've been in, and it's been something different every day. Um, so we, you know, we're, we're trying to be good citizens in the community and do what we can to in support whoever we can support, you know, doing these things. Um, but, um, it's, it's going to be a long road, and, you know, we're, so I, I, I think at least up to this point, I can report to you that, you know, students are getting educated, um, in, in, truthfully, it's going better than I thought it was going to go. I, I knew everybody was going to work hard, but I, you know, it, it's do, converting every, converting eight hundred section, nine hundred sections of courses in, in two weeks from, from a classroom to online is incredible, and the students have been resilient as well. Um, you know, many of them have never tried to learn this way, you know, they avoided taking online classes because they were scared of them. And, you know, we had a couple of students who, you know, reached out and said, I can't learn this way, and, you know, we said, okay, let us try and help you. And, uh, you know, in some cases, it was just the fact that they didn't have a computer, so we got them a computer. Um, we're, we're going to do what we can, so I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has right now and.
Steve, how you doing on laptops for the students? Are there students that still need them?
Well, it, it slowed down, you know, we're, um, y- yes, you know, we're, we're finding out every day, you know, that students are using their telephone in terms of trying to write papers and, and do their classes. You know, as, as we get, you know, a- as we get re- referrals from faculty, and so we're up to about a hundred seventy-five right now that, that we've given out. We're going to need more, we know that. Um, you know, Brad has, um, they're scouring our plazas now, you know, we've got some, we've got some computers where the batteries are no longer working, but if you plug it in, it still works. So, that's fine, we'll get, if we can get those working, we'll get them out to students, um, you know, wh- whatever we can, would, if we can get them something better than what they have now, then that's, that's what we're trying to do, so, um, you know, uh, fortunately, because of all the grants that we have, you know, that support students, our STEM grant and all, all of the things, we've got, you know, we've got a lot of staff that are dedicated to supporting students. And they have figured out very quickly how to do their jobs remotely. And they are still reaching out to students, we're still registering students for summer and fall, and, you know, these are things that everybody had to learn how to do um, differently, and, you know, I, I, if there, if there's any good part of this whole thing, it, it's the fact that we're, we've learned a lot of new things, you know, we've developed a lot of new capacities, you know. Um, I don't think we ever thought we could do a, a meeting like this before. Um, but we figured it out, and you figured it out, how, how to do it, you know. How many of you knew what Zoom was, you know, a, a month ago, you know? You know, I think we all wish we bought stock in it, uh, a couple of months ago, because
Got that right.
It's going through the roof right now. Um, but, you know, we're, you know, we're learning, um, you know, I don't think, w- we won't be the same when we come back. Hopefully, we'll be better. And hopefully, our students will be better, that they're not going to be, uh, afraid. One of the interesting things is, right now, you know, and it's early and I'm not, you know, I'm not putting a lot of stock in it, but we're down about the twenty-five percent in terms of registration for the fall semester. But we're actually up in terms of the students who have signed up for online classes. So, so it, it, students have, have kind of figured out already that, hey, I can do this. So obviously, a larger percentage of our students have decided to sign up for online classes than ever before. And, and that's, you know, be- before even converted some of our classes, because right now, they have the choice of still, you know, signing up for sections, which we don't know what they are. Uh, so it's, it's, hopefully, we're going to learn from this and, you know, with, and hopefully, we're really developing our capacity in a lot of different ways, and our faculty will be, you know, develop new pedagogic techniques that are going to help them do better in teaching students, and our students will become more resilient, and, you know, we'll, we'll try to make something good out of this crisis.
What percentage was that, Dr. Rose?
Of what?
Of those that are signing up for online courses?
Uh, we're, we're up, we're up higher, we're down twenty-five percent overall in enrollment, but we're actually up about five percent in those signing up for online classes. So this may be a trend, you know, this may be, now that they're not afraid of taking online classes, we'll have more demand for it, you know, and, you know, who knows, but, you know, we, we, we certainly will try to do what we can to turn whatever we can out of this situation into a positive.
Dr. Rose, I'm, uh, I'm hearing that a lot of colleges, well, some have already expressed desire to remain closed, uh, through either January or all of next year, where not closed, but they would do, uh, the remote instruction.
Yeah.
Uh, I've heard from some parents and some students saying that if they do not get a reduction in their, uh, tuition, it may look to go to a community college and so their four-year college opens up and.
We're hearing the same thing.
Yeah. So that may be good news for us.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why I said, you know, I, I could make an argument very easily that we're going to be up twenty-five percent in September. Look, I've heard from, you know, parents who say right now, there is no way I'm letting my child live in a residence hall this fall. You know, that, you know, e- if they want to go to class, fine, but we're, we're not letting them. And some students who were going away to college out of state are just saying now, no, I'm staying close to home. So I think for a whole lot of reasons, and the fact that unfortunately, so many people are out of work right now, and using all that money they've saved up for education to pay the bills right now. So, you know, that's where community colleges come in, and, you know, we're, so, I, I, I think it's, it's, you know, we've been working with the New Jersey Department of Labor, we've been working, you know, clearly with the Office of the Secretary of Higher Education, because people see what we do as a way to get out of this problem. You know, the training of healthcare workers, you know, what we're going to need in order to, to deal with this, we're the ones who could develop programs quickly in terms of being able to meet the demands that are going to come up right now, and, uh, so I, y- you know, I, yeah, I, I, there is some real good reason for optimism that we're, our role is going to be more important than ever. But whether it starts this fall, or whether it's January, or, you know, it, it's just hard to tell exactly where we're going to be, you know, a few months from now. I mean, we all have our crystal ball right now, and it's. You know, a few months from now, I mean, we all have our crystal ball right now, and it's trying to figure this out is hard.
Early to tell right.
Any other questions? Well, Harvey, if it's okay, go through the rest of the agenda.
Alrighty.
So the other things we have for discussion, um, for pretty, pretty mundane stuff, uh, Perkins. A Perkins, uh, program, which requires us to have board approval to move around some money because of of what has happened. You know, obviously, we're, uh, we've had a lot of money for travel that has been in the budget, which we're not going to be able to spend, obviously, at this point. So they're allowing us to shift some of the purposes of the these funds in order to make, get value out of it. So so we'll be doing that as well. Uh, purchases of goods and services, I'll just bring to your attention that, uh, you know, as I said earlier, what the last purchase you see here is for laptops. A hundred, hundred twenty-eight thousand, hundred twenty-nine thousand, uh, to to buy additional laptops. That, you know, Todd was able to scour through some of our grants that we have. And wa- was able to, you know, find, to repurpose some money. Because some of the things that we were planning on doing, obviously, we can't do right now, because they were things we had to be on campus. So, you know, obviously, we'd we'd like to repurpose some of these funds in order to be able to do more for our students. So, um, my guess is, you know, every month now, we're going to, we're we're thinking of new ways to to do things. Obviously, the other thing that's going on is we have all these people who are working from home, who've who've never done it before. And, you know, the good news is our technology has helped pretty well. But, you know, we're finding some things that, um, we may not have as robust an infrastructure as we want. So Brad is trying to make sure that, uh, you know, people working remotely have all of the technology that they need in order to get this done. So we're we're trying to evaluate those kind of things right now. The good news is those ki- those are the kind of things that this federal money is going to be able to help us with. So, um, we'll work on it. One of the things we had that we, you know, we always thought our phone system was good at the college. And it's a fairly modern phone system, it's not an old-fashioned system, you know. We've been doing voiceover IP for, you know, more, well over a decade now, you know, more than that. But, um, one of the things we found out from this si- situation is, well, our our phone system is great. But it's not meant for everybody working remotely, you know, to be able to transfer everything as easily as we could from, you know. Because we've got people answering the phones at home now. You know, when you call the college, you don't just get a no answer. You know, we've got people during working hours answering the phones where we've been able to transfer lines to to people's homes. So that they get a live person answering the phone, so that they can hopefully help them better. It's working, but we, it it could be easier, so we're, you know, we're looking at ways of improving those kind of things. So you you'll be, in the next couple of months, you'll be seeing more purchases like that in terms of, uh, what we need. So Harvey, that's it for the agenda.
Okay. I don't know if we have to go to an executive.
We we do not.
Okay. So, may I have a motion on resolution number two? What?
I cannot hear.
I can't either.
What? Who was that?
Ask again for a motion.
Okay, yeah, may I have a motion for, uh, consent agenda item A and C?
I need names, please. Tanis move, two second.
Yes, he came in at seven oh eight.
All right, I can, okay, okay. Trustee Duham?
Yes.
Trustee Esquiche?
Yes.
Trustee Marco?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Poe?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Trevetti?
Yes.
Trustee Tanis?
Yes.
Chairman Nutter?
Yes. Are there any remarks from the trustees or from the public? No public comments.
I do want to share with everyone that my wife and I welcomed our second child.
Congratulations.
Who is it? Who is it?
This is Lonak.
But that's, that's a, uh, very interesting time to have a child, but, uh, it looks like it's all working out, and that's what's great.
It was an interesting and scary time, but it worked out, so we're all good.
That's wonderful.
Good for you. Okay, if there's no other discussions, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second by?
Yolanda.
Second, Yolanda, thank you. Trustee Duham?
Yeah.
Trustee Esquiche?
Yes.
Trustee Marco?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Poe?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Trevetti?
Yes.
Trustee Tanis?
Yes.
Chairman Nutter?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Good job, everybody.
You.
Thank you.
As anything new comes along, I will pass it along to you between meetings and hopefully, all will continue to go good.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.